The difference, I say we're good. All right. I would like to call this January 3rd, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I am not Jack Miller, as my name tag may say. As y'all know, I am the county administrator. Unique privilege and honor of a county administrator is to preside over the meeting for the election of the oncoming or incoming chairman. And it is, again, my honor, for the sixth time, I believe, to call for nominations for Chair of the Middlesex County Board of Supervisors.
Average the prayer, Mr. President.
Oh, you know what? Yeah, let's do the prayer.
And the pleasure of allegiance.
And the pleasure of allegiance. Mr. Jesse, would you lead us in the prayer, please?
All right. Bow our heads in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we just like to thank you for letting us see another year, dear Lord. Dear Lord, let's pray for board members and citizens who come to see us conduct this meeting this evening. These and all the blessed, in my heavenly Father's name, amen.
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 Mr. Miller?
All offices of the United States, please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Yeah, we can't be too quick to get rid of this to the rightful error. So, I'd like to have a nomination for Chair.
I'll nominate Chip Holt.
I'll second that, Ms. Chair.
Okay, nomination made by Mr. Jesse, seconded by Mr. Miller. Any other nominations for Chair?
I'd like to close the nomination process at this time, Ms. Chairman.
Nominations are closed. All those in favor of Chip Holt as Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Mr. Holt, Chairman, congratulations. I will cede control of this to you now, and you can complete the election of Vice Chairman and the other organizations.
I'm going to play musical.
Hey. And I'll talk to you about that.
You're going to need that. You're going to need that, too. This is your championship.
All righty then, I go from being a rookie supervisor to a rookie Chair. So, you get what you pay for. All right, at this point, I'd like to open up the nominations for the election of a Vice Chairman.
I move that Pete Mansfield be Vice Chair.
Been a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Any additional nominations?
I move we close the nominations, Mr. Chairman.
We close the nominations, and all those in favor of Mr. Pete Mansfield as Vice Chairman, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
All righty, that would be four to one. He passes. Now, I O D is to establish the time and place of our regular meetings. As we all know, we've had our business meetings at three in the afternoon, and meetings that involve public interchange at seven. So, at this point, we just entertain supervisors' comments on whether we need to make a change or leave it like it is.
I think we should leave it like it is, Mr. Chairman. And we're recording now our meetings, which really opens up new possibilities for the citizens of Middlesex County to know what's going on.
I'll second that. All right. Any further discussion on time and place and date of meetings? That makes it the first Tuesday, business meetings at three, and the public hearings at 7:00 P.M.
In the day of the week, we have to be, Matt, I haven't, but do we have, there, nobody, there's no election this year, so we don't have to worry about that, I don't think. What else, Betty? Fourth of July, okay this year? Okay, and New Year's, okay. Good luck. All right, very good. Thank you, sir.
If there's no further discussion, we will call for the question. All in favor of living time and dates as they are, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. All righty, now we get into the consent agenda, and I think most everything is in order. But, Mr. Matt, you've got a petition.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we've got a couple of late arrivals on the agenda. One, I'd like to add a time right before agency comments to introduce two new employees, one of which the board has already been introduced to in November, but one that the board has not. And I'd also like to ask the board to put or place on the agenda an action item for adoption of a financing resolution for TD equipment that will handle the financing for the voiceover IP project. We received the financial documents yesterday that were in need of ratification before Friday. And this, of course, will be the last board meeting we have before Friday, and we have slated to close on that financing, as I'll explain later, on the eighth, in order to be consistent with this last rate block that we've had.
Where on the agenda would you like to place that?
I would place it under regular agenda items, Item D.
Item D.
D, okay.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, depending on the weather circumstances, I know the board's intent is to try to get out of here as early as practicable tonight. There may be a need to reposition the closed session before our recess for dinner in light of the weather events that may be starting really any minute. And the board's desire to maybe get out of here by 7:30 after all the public hearings are over. That would move that closed session to 5:00 P.M., depending on when we finish regular business.
Is there planning, directed, prepared to move?
He has stated that he, for his part, he should be finished with the public hearings about 7:30, 7:20, 7:30. For his part, he can't allow for questions y'all may have and public comments that will be present tonight.
All right, well, with the addition of introduction of two employees, the resolution in Item D, and what was the other one, Matt?
Relocating the closed session.
Relocating the closed session. With those three changes, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion, sir, and with the additions as so indicated by county administrator.
I'll second. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. At this point, I would, let's see, like to open the public comment period. If anybody in the general public would like to address the board. If so, please come forward and state your name and address.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. My name is Harold Muller, 1939 Remlech Drive in Urbana. Reason I'd like to address the board this afternoon, I know budgeting is coming up in short order, and last time I spoke, I spoke about what Williamsburg does with their lodging fees, and that I was hoping that you all would take a look at introducing a lodging fee in the area. In doing that, I went to the Williamsburg website, and I looked under the local taxes. Their real estate taxes, fifty-seven cents a hundred, very close to ours. They have a five percent lodgings fee, but on top of that, they have a $2 per night transient fee. That $2 a night transient fee has to be spent on advertising and building up the local community businesses and other things, i.e. economic development individual and so on. So, I did a back-of-the-envelope look at this, and on the website from Thousand Trails now, they say they have 1,200 camp sites at Bethpage. At a forty percent occupancy, that's 480 a night for seven months. I also did that, used that same scenario on Gray's Point. That's putting us in an area of about $732,000 at five percent a year, using an average night fee of $50. If you add on top of that, excuse me, I have that backwards, pardon me, the $2 a night fee would bring in 332,000, and it would be 700 and some thousand in round numbers at five percent lodgings fee at a forty percent occupancy rate for seven months. If you were, that's five cents on the tax dollar. If you were to take away the land use, which I advocate here, making the same tax rate for everybody in the county, that would be another $400,000 or another two cents. That's seven cents of the real estate tax that doesn't have to be employed on the residential consumers in this area. And we've always been the source for every tax dollar just about that comes out of here. I will give you that Williamsburg is higher on their car tax, they're $4, not $3.50. They're higher on their boat tax, and they're higher on airplane tax. But they give a hell of a lot more services than we get in Middlesex County for the fifty-seven cents a hundred. But they've grown, grown their tourist attractions. And I remember when Williamsburg Tourist Administration was in the bottom of a basement in Williamsburg and had about four telephones in there when they first started it. So, we can do the same thing here. Thank you very much. You all have a blessed New Year.
Thank you, Al. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board at this time?
First of all, I'd just like to say Happy New Year to all the board members and everyone here today. At this time, I would like to extend my welcome to the newest board member, John Coons. Welcome, John. We hope you will be an asset on this board and not just another body occupying a seat. We also expect that you will work with all the people of this county and not just a few, which is what we seriously need for the betterment of our county as a whole. John, I read what you had said after you were elected about listening to the concerns of the citizens of Middlesex County. I just hope that what you were, I just hope that were not just all words. As they say, actions speaks louder than words. You promised to represent not just your district, but to represent all of us with due diligence and to work with, and to look, and we all look forward to working with you on our many, many issues of concerns in this county of Middlesex. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Jim Goforth, Hartfield, school board member, as most of you know. But I'm here today as a member of the Middlesex Foundation. Bob was a very active member on that committee. I looked at your agenda to see if maybe additional person might be appointed to that. We're in the process of hiring architect and engineer, so we're moving pretty fast. So, I hope you appoint somebody that's really interested in that, okay? Also, Bob served on the Finance Committee. I didn't see that on the agenda. There's a meeting the fifth that that individual ought to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board at this time? If not, I'll declare the period of public comment to be closed, and I'll just ask our newspaper reporter if he wanted to get that picture now or wait until later. Okay, all right, that'd be fine. Item number four, constitutional officers as needed. We've got a treasurer's report that is pages thirty-seven through thirty-nine of your packet. Are there any other constitutional officers that wish to address the board? If not, we'll move on to agency and staff reports, Department of Transportation. I think I see Ron Peak out there. Ron, you want to come up and?
No, well. Did you want to introduce the two?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable board members, staff, and general public. I'll be briefed today because we've apparently got some work I have to do tonight.
You're not going to be busy, are you, Ron?
We actually got busy yesterday with some of our hired equipment. But in any event, just quickly, over the last month, and speaking about snow, we did start a Paint the Plow program this year, and we're honored and thrilled that the high school participated, and I think they have a plow painted up right in the front yard right now. We haven't come to get it yet, I don't think. But a beautiful job on the Paint the Plow program with the high school, and I think the elementary school also received one. I don't know that that's been concluded as yet, but we are certainly tickled to get into that kind of thing, and I'd be proud of the high school and elementary school and the work they've done. We did do some turn lane and shoulder work at 33 and Regent Road. Been doing a lot of pothole repairing, patch, trying to get caught up before the pothole season really gets us in a couple of months. The limbing contractor that we have has been in the county, just started, and we will have them in Middlesex for probably about sixty days. Been working on the work orders and definitely snow removal equipment being outfitted. Also wanted to indicate that the Marsh Punggoh Boat Ramp got a little cold on us, had to postpone it a little tiny bit, but as soon as the weather breaks, we hope to have that complete, probably in about sixty days when it gets a little bit warmer. Here are some of my notes from today on snow, and...
We have notes, too.
Okay, see, yours look better than mine.
I can read here.
But I need to let you know that it didn't start out that way this morning, but apparently in the prognostication game, Middlesex has now moved ahead of Matthews and Gloucester for the potential accumulation. And two hours ago, we have a, we have a high-powered outfit that predicts everything for us as far as weather goes, pavement, temperatures, accumulation, hour by hour. And it looked as if, this morning started out, Middlesex about 5.9 inches, and it's been about ninety minutes ago I went over it, and it now has Middlesex at 6.7 inches accumulation between now and about 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. So, we'll see how that goes. Again, these are meteorologists, and we all know about the truths and consequences of being a meteorologist, but right now, Middlesex is expected 6.7, Gloucester and Matthews about 6.1, and King, Queen, King William and Essex between three and four over the course of the evening. The duration looked as if, I heard you talking about tonight's meeting, and as best I can see, you're probably pretty good to about seven, eight o'clock. That doesn't mean you won't see some snow, but the bulk of the snow appears to be somewhere 8:30, 9:00 to about 4:00 in the morning, with it blowing on out of here about mid-morning and well before noon tomorrow. Also, we're certainly, our chemical buildings and salt buildings are chock full, we're ready to go, and I think we'll have about twenty-two, twenty-two trucks and pieces of equipment rolling at 8:00 tonight. So, bear with us, with the temperature expected to stay very, very cold, we are concerned, of course, about icing and freezing and slick roads for the next couple of days. So, you know, please be cautious and be safe, and get home tonight, you know, by 9:00 or so, and have your hot tidy. That's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
Well, thank you, Ron. I think we all agree, y'all do a great job.
We're all coming to your house, Ron. We're, right now, of course, we're in Urbana, and the residency will be open. We're all gone to twelve-hour shifts, 8:00 in the morning to 8:00 in the evening, and then 8:00 in the evening until tomorrow morning. So, we'll be there for you.
Thank you, Ron. Y'all do a great job on the snow removal. Does anybody have any questions of the Virginia Department of Transportation?
Just real quick, Ron, I've got a brief update, too. Our emergency services coordinator was in on the conference call, and they're now predicting wind gusts of up to 45, is that correct?
That's correct.
When do y'all make a decision to close the bridge? Is it, I think it has to get sustained above 60, doesn't it?
No, it doesn't have to be quite that high. Normally, it's 45.
Okay, so...
Sustained.
Sustained, but not gusts?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to know if we need to let the rest of these squads know anything, because...
Okay, well, that's our basic SOP. And the contractor, because of the work on the bridge, will have, will have contact there that we have. Of course, they have platforms and tarps, and all of a sudden, six inches of snow can be impact on their operations, but we'll be, we'll be plowing and doing our job this evening.
Okay, right, thanks, Ron.
Any other questions from the board? Ron, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad I'm going home and going to sleep tonight, not having to worry about plowing those roads.
Turn to, get the fireplace stoked up and kick back.
Yep, yep. Thank you, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, real quick, before we move on to school matters, I would like to introduce our two new employees.
Please.
You have met Mr. David Lehman before. I think y'all met him in November. Today was his first day, however, so he gets to join us as emergency services coordinator on the outset of a major storm event.
That's why you drive by fire.
When I got back from Bath, I think we followed that up the next weekend with a hurricane, so he's following in my shoes. Next, we have with us today, Leanna Burell. She is our new accounts payable clerk. She started today as well. Want to introduce her to the board. Very happy to have her on board, and it was, it's kind of funny, I told her in the hallway earlier, I feel with us trying to get ready for a board meeting and half a dozen other things, I feel like she may get lost in the shuffle a little bit, but I understand Beth and Betty took her around and introduced her to everybody in the building. We're very happy to have her.
Well, welcome to both of you. Moving along to school matters, Dr. Peter Gretz. Dr. Pete?
Good afternoon.
Same to you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Happy New Year. I've got two appropriations and then two items I'd just like to update the board. At your pleasure, I can do either one before the other.
At your will.
Okay, okay, well, the appropriations that are in your packet are routine. We, again, we have to apply for federal money in the summer, and we're instructed to use the previous year's award, and then sometime in the fall, we get an actual appropriation amount, and those trickle in, and so we've continued to come back and ask you to appropriate those funds in the actual amounts. And so, both of these, one is additional money, $10,000 of additional money that we've not gotten in the past in a Title IV account, rural and low-income schools fund. Again, we haven't been awarded that in the past. And then the other is simply adjusting by a little less than $2,000, the Title III Limited English Proficiency Fund.
What does this buy us, Dr. Gretz? A limited English proficient, I mean, what is it, a class?
This is money.
Has these children, because they...
Students who are designated as limited English proficient or English language learners, they're called now, ELLs. We have very few of those, and so this, that's why we don't get a whole lot of money through that account, but there's a formula that the federal government uses to allocate those monies depended, depending on what that demographic looks like in each locality.
Okay, all right.
And so, we have somebody who works with those students, and we contract with them.
All right, Ms. Chairman, I'll make the motion, go ahead and approve FY 2018-22. Also, I could do both, I guess, can't I? 2018-23, I move we approve those, Ms. Chairman.
Second motion. And a second, duly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered.
Thank you, thank you. And then two matters I'd just like to update, pieces of information. One, I'm delighted to tell you that the Sinclair Walker Historical Marker that this board so generously voted to support has been approved. We just received that word, and so the next step there, V dot representatives will come out and meet with representatives of that committee, steering committee that led that effort, and finalize the location. I think we should see that, some kind of a ceremony, and actually have the marker sometime, probably in April. So, I think you'll see, you'll see a press release about that soon, and just want to thank you again for your support. I've been delighted to work with the folks on that committee to just facilitate that, but I think that's an important, important thing for Middlesex. Second, I want to let you know about a coalition that's being formed by several school divisions. Sixty-four small rural school divisions in Virginia have come together to form a small and rural school coalition to try to unify the voice in, at the table in legislative decision-making, policy decision-making matters, to give small school divisions a stronger voice at the table. I've been privileged to represent our region on the Board of Directors of this coalition. Going to ask the school board to pass a resolution, and I have a copy here. It isn't passed yet, it's not approved, but I just wanted to let you know about it. Mr. Walker, we shared this with him, and he wanted to make sure you knew about it, too. I think this is an important thing for us, and Middlesex will benefit tremendously, I think, from some of the work that this group would do. I'll leave a copy of this with Mr. Walker.
Dr. Pete, if I may, would it be appropriate for the Board of Supervisors to adopt a similar resolution in support of that?
That would be wonderful.
We'd certainly love to have any support that you would have.
Just to add and extend a little bit of your remarks, I know Jack Miller has served as legislative liaison for the Board of Supervisors in years past, and the board was very successful, we think, in partnering with up to 54 cities and counties around the state in unifying our voice about the recent stormwater amendments that we're going through over the last couple of years. And I can't say how strongly I agree with that effort that y'all are underway with, because, you know, we depend on the Superintendent's Association or other associations to represent us, but the best way to get that representation is build that coalition like you're doing.
Absolutely.
I highly commend that.
Because what's the best part of it was that 54 counties all of a sudden questioned their representatives and senators and say, what are you going to do with stormwater? And they stood there like the proverbial deer in the headlights, what do you mean? Well, DEQ is planning on driving us in the ground here. And if it hadn't been those 54 counties, I don't think we'd be in the posture that we are now. I really don't. This is a good thing, and we've been fighting that in Vaco for a long time, whereas small rural counties seem to lose their voice sometime, but if you come together as a group, it makes an awful lot of difference.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that. There's several things that have happened recently, especially where state funding has been impacted negatively for us, that unintended consequences, I think, of some decisions that are made a lot of times by larger school divisions who have lobbyists and a more active voice. Most small rural school divisions are increasing, are experiencing decreases in enrollment, decreases in tax revenue, a lot of challenges that are unique, that I think if we can all come together, we'll have a strong voice at the table and be able to do some good work.
The timing is good for this, because I just signed some paperwork concerning the census that's getting ready to come up, and we're so close to that 10,000 mark that if we drop under that, all of a sudden, all this funding re-evolves for, because they don't like little teen counties, well, you're not really worth, well, I hate to say this, but anyway, you're not really worth dealing with. And that's, it's important that, you know, that we, like you and I have talked since you've been here, you always look for that, something will hit you from left field, and this is one of those things that could sneak up on us for... Yeah, I would easily support a resolution of that.
Mr. Walker, Phil be in on this earlier, and as far as I'm concerned, it's a no-brainer. So, the Chair would certainly entertain a motion to adopt...
I also move, Mr. Chairman, that we adopt this resolution.
It would be similar, just substitute Middlesex County...
Correct.
...school board.
Got your motion, sir. Signified by Pete. I second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Very good.
Thank you.
And we both apologize for the timing of this. We know y'all don't want stuff delivered to you at a meeting, but the timing is critical for the General Assembly session.
Well, it's all right when they're easy like this one.
Will you have any representatives in Richmond doing the General Assembly from this group, if y'all form it up fast enough?
We're meeting on a week from tomorrow.
Okay.
The Steering Committee to put our next steps together, so I would, I do believe we will.
Well, volunteer this as well, the Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission has a number of issues that they are working with Keith Hodges to work on. To that end, we felt it necessary to authorize and execute an agreement with a lobbyist of our own, because I think we have 42 bills of consequence...
Yes.
...or something like that.
Yes.
So, the Middle Peninsula Planning Commission could add this bill to one of those of note and have our lobbyists help the committee out as well, because it's definitely something that impacts the counties, especially the rural counties, and there's not a county on the Middle Peninsula that this wouldn't impact, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Pete?
Keep your abreast of what's going on up there, Dr. Pete.
Certainly will. Well, next item is social services, and it's nice to see Rebecca Morgan in the audience. Come on up, Rebecca.
Hello, Happy New Year to you all. I come today to talk to you about CSA. Matt, you want to do the slides for me, or do I have control?
I will, I will try. I think I've got a, I don't think, do we have it in PDF form?
It's in PDF.
Is it simple?
Not up.
Okay.
It's fine like that, yeah.
We'll just do it.
You can just scroll. Okay. So, CSA was created in 1992, and originally it was called the Comprehensive Services Act, and today it's called the Children's Services Act. That change was made in 2014. But what it did was created a collaborative system of services and funding that's child-centered, family-focused, and community-based. And if you'll scroll down for me?
Yep, I got it. Yep, I got it.
I don't think I can do it from up here. So, basically, what it did was, each individual state agency, and that flowed through to the local level, Social Services, Juvenile Justice, the Department of Ed, Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, each had separate pools of funding, and some of that funding was 4E, federal 4E funding, and some of it was just general state funding. And what CSA did was took all of that money and pooled it into one state fund. So, what does CSA do? The two mandated populations that are most used here in Middlesex County are, first, children placed in an approved private special education program, and two, children receiving foster care services. So, the two local organizations that are most served by CSA are the school system and social services. And how is this money approved? The CPMT is the Community Policy and Management Team. Matt Walker serves as the chair. Dr. Pete serves as the vice chair, and I as the social services director and the fiscal chair. And social services essentially writes the check, handles the audits, handles all of the fiscal responsibilities for CSA funding. And the responsibilities of CPMT include establishing local policies, quality assurance, managing funds, submitting grant proposals, and authorizing and monitoring expenditures. So, I have come to you today, these are, this is data from the past three fiscal years, and I can certainly go back farther if anyone is interested, but I think this paints a pretty succinct picture of why I'm here today. In fiscal year 15, we spent a little under $400,000. We typically budget about $500,000 for CSA. We rose in fiscal year 16, and then, in fiscal year 17, unfortunately, we are projected to spend roughly $600,000, which is about $100,000 over the projections. Here, you'll see Special Education Day placements is where we have really grown in our expenditures. That's that column there on the left. Foster care services have actually decreased in fiscal year 15. They were up to about $200,000, and then, this year, they're projected to be less than So, total expenditures fiscal year 15 was $569,000, fiscal year 16 was $453,000, fiscal year 17 is $542,000. However, we just received a request right before the first of the year after this presentation was submitted, and that's going to add an additional $50,000 to $60,000 to the budget, and that is for a private day placement. So, for fiscal year 18, the CSA budget is projected to be at least $570,500. There are currently 10 children CSA funds have been provided to fund private day placements this fiscal year, so it's a private day placement. That's where our local school system can no longer meet the behavioral needs of a child, and has to send that child to a private facility to be educated each day. Typically, those facilities are in Richmond. We use some in Newport News, and I believe there's one in Hampton that we also use. Those placements can cost as much as $350 per day. Again, on December 19th, we received an additional referral from the school system for a private day placement, which, when approved, will add to the total projected cost above. The CPMT, although we approve these expenditures, we have no authority to deny the placements. If this placement is written into a child's individualized educational plan, it is federal law that it be paid for. This is by no means a criticism of our school system. These children definitely need the services that the school system is recommending. It's just that the need for these services has grown in Middlesex County, and the number of children receiving the services has also grown, and the cost for providing the services has grown.
If I could elaborate just briefly on that, it's our understanding that this is pretty much characteristic across the state.
Yes.
Relative, that's actually the social services head in another county out southwest Virginia, and they're experiencing the same increases with their CSA budgets, for the same reasons.
Yeah. Mat rates. CSA mat rates are based on the composite index, and for Middlesex County, it's approximately 43.5%. So, unfortunately, while some of our costs that we put up for CSA are reimbursed, unfortunately, Middlesex County pays 43.5% of most of the costs. Somewhere in Gloucester, for instance, theirs is in the 30, 33% range, theirs is much higher because of the composite index, which I know you all are familiar with. The cost for most other mandated services provided in the community has a much higher reimbursement rate, so if we can maintain children in a local foster home, for instance, we're going to get about 75, 80% back of what CSA puts in. But because private day placements are typically not in the community and not community-based, it's only getting, we're only getting about 57, 56.5% back of what we put into it. So, what can we do? Certainly, we're not the only locality faced with the rising costs of private day placements. The General Assembly mandated a study, which was published in November, which follows this report, and the report generated more questions than recommendations, unfortunately. The work group has requested to stay in place through fiscal year 19. Potential legislation could address this issue to date, nothing's been filed. However, I did receive today, it's, there's a resolution, it's House Resolution 29, I believe, and what it does is ask J.Larke to do a study into the rising costs of CSA and see what can be done to mediate some of the costs. One popular idea gaining traction is to transfer the funding for private day placements back to the Department of Education. So, instead of having the funds designated for these private day placements put into the Children's Services Act Fund, they're asking to take the money and just give it back to the Department of Ed to manage it as they see fit. Another option many localities have implemented is placing funding for private day placements in the local school system's budget. So, instead of CPMT managing the entire pool of funds, localities take a portion of the funds, give it to the school system, and then they manage their own funding. Localities that have tried this have seen a decrease in spending, I think because it's a little bit different when it's part of your own budget as to how the money is sometimes managed. So, that's another option that may gain traction, and certainly, one open to us. Questions? I did go through that pretty quickly, and the Children's Services Act is very convoluted, but...
Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Rebecca, are these children, are they orphans, or are they at risk?
No, not at all. Most of the children have a behavioral, they, most of them have a disability, so intellectual disability, a mental health concern, autism is a popular one.
Are these St. Joseph's Villa-type?
St. Joseph's Villa is, yes, one of the placements that we use. Some of the children have just behavioral needs that cannot be managed, but they all have the individualized education plan, which means, you know, the school system has certified that they have a disability, essentially. And the school system tries very hard to serve them in the school. They go through lots of steps before this action is taken.
Right.
So, again, I don't mean this to be divisive at all, or a criticism of what they're doing, it's just the challenges at this point have overcome the budget that we've placed aside for these expenses.
But the state does tie directly to the composite index, right?
Our reimbursement rate is, yes.
Depending upon size, either student has a disability, you must go into this program.
The school system holds a meeting. It's an individualized educational plan meeting, and the parents are invited to that meeting, and the child's teacher, anyone involved with the school system and the child, comes to the meeting, and they all discuss what the best option is for the child's continuing education.
So, it comes from the school board?
Correct. Well, not the school board, but the school system, yes. Yes.
And if I can add, many of the kids, by the time they come to us at the CPMT, these are severely emotionally and physically disabled people that need, I can't stress that enough, need the day placement, need the educational resources, and meant a lot to them. And just to reiterate what Rebecca said, they're entitled to the services. These are considered entitlements that we don't have any control over saying they can't have.
No.
It's basically just a step in the process to authorize the payment.
Yeah, this is essentially federal law.
And the school system's also responsible for the transportation that they...
They are, they are, and the Children's Services Act does not fund the transportation. The school system is responsible for the transportation costs associated.
We had a, I won't call it a working committee, because it didn't get that far, but I would call it kind of a exploratory committee that was made up of several counties around the Northern Neck and Middle Peninsula, to look at the possibility of having a facility closer to Middle, closer to the Middle Peninsula or Northern Neck. Many of the Northern Neck counties were very interested, because they're transporting their kids to Richmond and Northern Virginia even, just haven't got very far with it.
We had one here at one time.
We used staff St. Joseph's Villa.
We had one right here, it was one, and it worked beautifully, and then one day they walked up and said, "Bye," and walked away.
Right.
I mean, it was wonderful. I mean, now, the kids, they didn't have to sit on a car, hour to go to Richmond and back. I mean, they were, they were being helped within a few minutes of arriving at...
And that's another option, too, to approach a St. Joseph's Villa, or one of these larger national companies, and see about locating a facility here in Middlesex.
For the price we're paying, though, Rebecca, really, St. Joseph's Villa, are they the only act in town?
No, not at all. There's also FaceOn in Richmond, and then, there's Rivermont and Hampton, and there's a couple.
We could induce them to...
Some of the ideas that exploratory...
Some of the ideas, get them in, because Wayne and I know how much money it saves us. I mean, the transportation cost was phenomenal, remember that?
Yeah.
Some of the, some of the issues the exploratory committee evaluated was, I mean, we have several facilities, one facility in Lancaster, that's in a closed school, that would serve as a good facility, fairly centralized for several of the counties, and then, potentially approaching some of these entities to operate the facility, or contract with them to operate, we just haven't got very far with it. Rebecca, do you have a sense of what percentage of the costs are related to transportation?
Transportation costs, you would have to check with the school board about. I don't know. We just handle the cost for the daily rate for the kids that are in private day placement, but I'm sure they're astronomical, because I don't know of one child that's not traveling at least an hour.
Because you commit one car and one driver to one student.
Correct. And it's difficult.
Simple as that, I mean, you know.
And if it's in Richmond, they stay in Richmond.
They stay in Richmond all day, sitting in the car, going, whatever they do, but they got to be there when the child is released from school, they've got to be there.
It definitely, it looks like to me, that if we had something local, we would be one heck of a lot better.
Pete, it worked fine for us, and it just pulled the plug on anything. St. Joseph's Villa came down here, that's why I say maybe we ought to check in to some other institutions for a better word.
Well, and another...
See if they can come down here and help us.
Another suggestion that was made was working with the Community Services Board, who was present at all of these work group discussions, to try and put services in place at the school, providing some sort of additional space and additional staff, and let them provide some additional services, and that way, you wouldn't be building a facility or creating something new. It would just be adding to the existing services that we have. But, we all came to the determination that nothing could be done just Middlesex County. We needed to make it regional, and getting there is not a one-year or two-year process.
I remember the last meeting we had, I basically stated, "Okay, we all say we're behind exploring this and trying to do something. Who wants to be the product champion on this?"
Silence.
If I had my crickets ringtone queued up, because everybody's just busy and doing various other things, and no one really could step forward to champion a regional effort.
Can I ask Rebecca one more question?
Please.
Rebecca, once these, these children leave us, I don't know if, I don't know how they leave us, is it by age, or by what, what follow-up do we have now that says, "Jack Miller was in his class, and he left the system," what is he doing that? I mean, is there a follow-up process involved in this? You're shaking your head, "No," I don't like hearing that. So, you just, so you just cut them loose, and away they go.
Well, not me, but there are, for children in foster care, I will say that there are surveys done for those children when they reach 19, 21, and so on and so forth, that we maintain to see, we do follow children in foster care. I can't speak for children receiving private day placements. I can't speak to the follow-up, I don't know directly of any follow-up that exists.
They've always been a very sensitive area with the board, because we want to help the young people, absolutely, but, like I said, the disappointment was when we lost that facility, I tell you, because it was really, really got, it was more individualized treatment. Matt, were you here when we did it? No, I don't think that was...
I came in on the tell-in of it, I think it closed down earlier in 2007, 2008.
Yeah.
That's my last question, Rebecca, thank you so much for the presentation.
So, just kind of a heads up that there will be a request for additional funds this fiscal year, and then, a request as you're considering the budget for fiscal year 19, that I think it would behoove us to increase that budget. And remember, you know, 57%-ish gets reimbursed, so it's not completely designated, but, and if anybody has any questions, this is a lot to digest, I'm happy to talk about CSA in-depth more, just give me a call.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you all, Happy New Year.
May I ask?
Please.
It sounds like everybody here feels like it would be a really good thing to get with other counties in this immediate area, and see what we can do about setting something up. What do you think we, the worst thing that can happen is we all go home and worry about snow, which possibly is going to happen. What do we need to do to take the next step forward to set, should we meet with your counterparts?
Well, I think, I don't think my, because we met, we had county administrators, we had social services, we had superintendents. I don't know if this Board of Supervisors reaches out to a sister Board of Supervisors, if that would do it.
It takes a catalyst, a coalition of the willing, just to get started, and then, once other counties see that something's successful, the glomming on will happen, so to speak. And if we have, I think, a coalition of the willing, it's just having the time to execute, and having someone step forward and kind of champion the project, that's been the issue. I've had numerous conversations on this matter with Norm Rosavi, with Westmoreland County, and Westmoreland County's as far, you know, west as we are east, and they're very interested in doing something regional on the matter. At least, they have been in the past, it's just getting something going. We can reach out again and see if there's a newfound vigor in trying to get something moving forward.
Trump Walsh would be a major asset to us.
Right now, we have...
He was included in the work group, in CSP.
Mr. Mansfield had asked how many kids currently. We have 10 children right now with an 11th that we've just received a new request for, so the total of 11 right now.
So, how many drivers do we have going?
I do not know that. Do not know that, because again, the transportation costs don't come out of this budget.
We can find that out from the school.
Yeah, but Dr. Gretz...
That's easy.
Alright, thank you.
Rebecca, thank you, glad to have you with us tonight.
Thank you all.
About again, also.
Thank you, stay safe.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you all.
I think the staff definitely heard a consensus of the board, we'll see if we can reach out and make some contact.
Alright, Mr. Gretz, I believe you've got an update on the White Eagle Creek landing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Many of you, the board members are, for the most part, familiar with this project, it's something we've been working on. For Mr. Kuntz's purposes, I don't believe he's been privy to what we've been working on. I'll just give a brief overview for his benefit. What we have is, we've gone forward with this permitting... What we have is we've gone forward with this permitting process for the, we're installing a bulkhead down at Whiting's Creek for the purposes of increasing some parking area at that particular public landing. Ron Peaks was just in here a few minutes ago. He basically told us that they're moving forward with the ramp renovations. That ramp got in very poor condition, they're currently upgrading that. Where we are in the permitting process is VMRC has sent us the permits for signatures. As they've been signed, in your appropriations, the, you've basically approved that $100 check for the most part. That's all VMRC needs for that particular permit. All our VMRC permitting, once we send that in, we'll send it in tomorrow, whenever the snow, we get back from the snow, we'll send that permit in and that'll execute that particular permit for VMRC. The Corps of Engineers has given us authorization. Both entities' teams think it's a pretty good project. There's one more hurdle to get over, so to speak, and I wish Ron would have stayed here, he might have been able to. VDOT seems to be the slower of the processes.
Yes, but that's okay.
I'm not going to go into that too much, but we do have to obtain a land use permit for the work we do on that, on VDOT property. That's just part of their process. So I'm currently trying to chase down Mike who does those and we're going to try to get that taken care of. With respect to going forward, I think we have enough in hand to go forward with trying to get this project up and running. I would imagine, at this time, I'm going to ask the board that they just authorize me to put this out to bid. That way we can find out what the costs are for the wall. I believe we have some materials of opportunity, what I like to refer to materials of opportunity.
Right.
For those who don't know what that is, that's free, free materials. Hopefully we have some of that. So hopefully we can keep moving forward with this project and maybe we'll have it at least by, probably maybe in by summer or something like that, if we keep going forward with it. So we're very close, we're almost at the finish line for the permitting and the next process would be to find out what it's going to cost and get some quotes and see where we're at.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm still on the recreational fishing board for the Virginia Marine Resources Commission. I was amazed they must think I will live another year. But long story short, we have a unique opportunity here because not only does Whiting's Creek facilitate, ease access to the Rappahannock River here, but for recreational use, but we have a lot of commercial use going out there too. So we might be able, don't call it double funding, because they hate to hear that, but maybe there will be some opportunities in some special funding that we can get into a little bit of the recreational fund plus the, the fund of actually having the harvesters using the facility.
Right, right. That was brought, and you're correct on that, that was brought out in our public access meetings that was held by Doug Dietrichson. We found out there was a lot of usage from that particular facility by the waterman. And we've had, of course, this is an ongoing thing that we're talking about, our public access on all of our sites that the county owns. But this one seemed to have, I guess you call it low hanging fruit. We had fairly positive input from our neighbors that have joined this property. So there seems to be some support, or a little bit of support to try to enhance this facility and make it a nicer facility for our citizens, so.
I think the neighbors have had issues with tow vehicles and trailers parked along the road and blocking things up. How much parking will this, for trailers and tow vehicles, will this create?
We, we haven't calculated any spaces per se. I think if anything we can do, if we can get two, three trailers in there.
Oh, we're more than, I think, David. I was figuring we could get at least eight to nine possibly.
Possibly, yeah.
If people, if people would park correctly, you know how that goes, some guys would skew in and kind of, but the beautiful part about it is nine times out of 10, by the middle of the day, the crabbers and oysters, they'd pull everything, they'd gone home for the day by that time, which leaves the whole facility wide open for any, and a lot of people fish down at Locust Hill off of that pier too. Only thing I would warn anybody, if you see that big rock pile out to the, right there by the dock, Matt, is be careful around there because that thing has more snakes in it than the South American jungle, man. It's a crumble, let me say, because they scared me and I'm normally not too frightened by reptiles, but we'll have to do something. And thank goodness that our representative with the Department of Transportation, she doesn't like snakes either, she said, we've got to do something about this. I went, whatever you want to do, just help yourself to yourself. But with that being said, I think it's a, it's a good project. I think we're going to be able to get some extra, and I don't depend on anything, but we might have the potential, might, that's a good word, have the potential of getting some state funding for this, which would be advantageous. We already cooperated with the Department of Transportation, they're going to put in a new boat launching facility and all for us anyhow. And of course, do a lot of the work. I have a neighbor who lives in the house up the road, he's a contractor and he said he's willing to do some at-kind work for us because he just wants to see the place thrive down there. So with the neighborhood being the way it is and supportive as they are, and the two property owners next door, the lady said, if we just listen to them, because they just like to have a fence down there, I said, well, we can certainly talk to you about that, you know? And I believe it's just a positive process. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we let David go out there and get some bids on this because like he said, it could be some free materials coming in here too, we just don't know. But at least it would get us, get us off the ground and out the barn and see what we're dealing with here.
Well, and some of this, oh, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Now, we have a motion to move forward with David getting bids. Did you want to make a comment?
Just one other comment, some of this project calls for a little bit of sand, as all our board members are aware of, we have a lot of sand, so that we have an abundance of.
Don't we need a drawing to get a bid?
Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah. Mr. Mansfield, the drawing has been submitted to VMRC for, and they've approved the plan. So VMRC, that plan has been submitted to VMRC. The plan shows a wall section, you know, a bulkhead section and a, and the plan itself. It can be tweaked, so to speak. I mean, we can, it's enough to get it permitted.
Tweaking would be putting in the fence.
Well, I mean, the wall itself could be tweaked or something we could add in, you know, it's, it's basically enough to get it permitted.
But you are saying how thick the seawall must be and?
The, we have, we're going to have to tune that in and do a little research at that point. We're calling for the SeaLock 9, I believe it's 9,000, I believe. It's a standard construction material, they're using it. We're going with a vinyl bulkhead in this case. This particular site has a lot of reflective energy from coming in from the mouth of Whiting's Creek. A standard wood bulkhead would tend to scour in front of it. You get, the vinyl was, has better maintenance to it, has a longer life for its expectancy. And additionally, when that wave action comes in, it reflects off that, that rippled effect off of that SeaLock 9,000 and it tends to disperse that wave energy so you don't get that damage, the adjacent damage from it as much.
And we're off the river too, and that's a big advantage. We're up in, kind of up in the creek where that northeast wind won't tire it all to pieces.
It would only catch it at a certain spot. It has to be just perfect, but it does get a little wave action against it. But it, in this case, we've specified the proper, it's a better option in this particular case and it's maintenance. You know, when you put vinyl, it doesn't require, you know, it doesn't rot like the, you know, has a longer.
In order to put it out for bid, Dave's going to prepare a bid spec document and we'll put it out for competitive.
Right, we're going to have to tune it in a little bit tighter than.
What would the timing be on that? How far out are you from being able to go out to bid if?
Pardon me?
How far out would it take to go out to bid? Is that three months out, six months?
Probably within a month or so.
Sure, like you just done for real. Well, we got a motion before all the questions and answers were, so.
Right.
Jack, with all this conversation, is your motion still in play?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Second. Any further discussion on allowing the planner to proceed with getting bids? If not, we'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go for it.
Thank you for the upgrade, update, David.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you.
All righty. Item E, Bay Transit. That's Mr. Pollock out in the audience. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, may I make one other question while we're here? We don't really need to, to give approval to go out for bids. For instance, David really could go out and get a, get a bid on his own and then present that to.
I feel more comfortable.
If he wants.
I would feel almost the same way, except that I think that it's staff eating up time on something that we may or may not approve. And I personally feel comfortable approving it out front so that we don't get a presentation for, here's the bid and y'all willing to pay for it, but I'm good.
All okay.
That's fine. I mean, I, you know, having, like, I agree with you, having permission to do that is advantageous.
I think it works well. We could have done it maybe by consensus, but I think, he knows we're behind him on it, so.
I think, I think in general, our staff has a lot going on, so being sensitive to killing it now or letting it go forward so that they can be freed up makes a lot of sense.
Absolutely.
All right, sir. Congratulations, Mr. Miller. Before I start, my boss Kathy Vesely from Bay Aging said that I had to thank Wayne Jesse. Mr. Holt, I'm sorry.
I know, Drew, I'm the supervisor. They don't start the music and we'll do music. Sorry. Don't mind us, we're really okay.
Anyway, Wayne, Kathy wanted me to thank you for New Year's Eve. I think you responded to a call at Port Town Village where some pipes burst in an apartment and she just wanted to thank you for helping her out and helping our resident got some temporary housing and we're working on getting that fixed, although this cold weather isn't helping it very much with that. But thank you. I also want to thank the board for 16 years of supporting Bay Transit. We started in Middlesex in November 2001. We're currently operating two buses from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. We do curb-to-curb or door-to-door service. And this past fiscal year, we're on the federal fiscal year, we provided 7,434 rides to Middlesex County residents with our public transit program. Now, I wanted to update you on this, where we are, just to refresh your memory. Middlesex County provides the local match for one bus and has for 16 years now. In 2016, we identified a need that because of the size of Middlesex, we're really struggling with meeting all the demands with the northern end of the county and the southern end of the county with one bus, which is just too big and too long for us to meet those needs. We received a grant from the River County's Community Foundation, specifically the Harris Fund, for a two-year pilot program for federal fiscal years 17 and 18. So we just finished the first year of our pilot program and we've just started the second year. That provided us $36,168 for each of those years, which is exactly what the county pays for local match for one bus. So this is providing the local match. This money, each $36,000 draws down $67,000 in federal and state funds to operate these buses. So with $36,000, we get an extra $67,000 drawn down from state and federal funds. So we're one year into the project and I wanted to update you a little bit on what that's meant and look at where we're going forward. The first thing I did was I asked some of our dispatchers, tell me what you know about the folks in Middlesex who are using Bay Transit and what the second bus has meant and how it's helped them out. And so they sent me an update and I'd like to share it with you. This year, we have gotten hundreds of people to work school, doctor's appointments and retail shops with the second bus being in service. We have seniors that live in Port Town Village that we take to and from important doctor visits in Gloucester and Tappahannock. When they get there and get done, they are taken back home without having to wait for hours. We have several new regular riders that we take to and from their places of employment every day. Carlton Edwards Lumber, Food Lion, Urbana Market, Pitts Lumber, Dockside Rehab, Walter Reed Hospital and Saluda Convalescent Center. Many of these are daily trips. We've recently started taking some alternate education students to school and for most of them, Bay Transit is their only form of transportation. Without the second bus, none of this would have been possible. Back in October, she received a call from one of our Carlton Edwards riders that had been riding since last October when we started the second bus. He called to thank us for what we did to get him to work over the past year. He was canceling his rides going forward because now he has bought a car and he's become more independent through having a car. And we consider that a success story. If someone gets, you know, if they don't use us anymore because they've been able to maintain a job and buy a car, then we think that's a pretty good success story. So this is coming from the dispatchers who are receiving the calls and the requests. I also, in your packet, I sent you some, some specific ridership information and I did it to compare fiscal year 17 to fiscal year 16. 16 was when we had one bus and 17 was when we had two. And just, we try to identify the purpose of the trip as best we can and that's what some of these categories are on the top of the spreadsheet. For FY17, DSS is Social Services, work obviously is employment. We saw increases overall of about 1,100 rides throughout the year. We are seeing, our average rides in FY16 per month were 531. In 17, they went up to 620. We only have two months of data for 18 and they're at 635. Another interesting outcome was the non-accommodations. At the far right, you can see in FY16, non-accommodations are when people call to request a ride and they need to be at work at 8:00 and they need to be picked up from their house in Churchview and the bus is in Deltaville at 8:00. So we can't accommodate that trip. We can't get them to work on time. So we try to track those to determine where our unmet needs are. In FY16, we had documented 1,069 non-accommodations and in 17, we were down to 563. So we feel like we've started to chip away at some of the folks that have not been able to get accommodated because of just having one bus in the region. The last thing we did, and this was, I met with Matt and Leslie Franklin with the River County's Community Foundation to talk about what is, what is some good information that shows progress or lack of progress in this pilot program. And one of the things that Matt asked for is, can you, can you figure out where people are being picked up from, what locations? So we, through our software, we developed a buy zip code ride request. And so this chart really just shows the ride requests from FY16 with one bus compared to FY17 when there were two buses by zip code. And overall, we saw a 24% increase. There was dramatic increases particularly in the northern end of the county, if you look at Churchview, Jamaica, Waterview. And those were the areas that we knew we were not serving in FY16 and previous to that. The demand, the single bus was being pulled to, down to Hartfield, Deltaville area because that's where, that's where the greater demand had been. And the folks up at the northern end of the county, we just weren't able to provide that service. So we're really pleased to see that those folks are getting more access to transportation and they're taking advantage of it. And so the significant increases that you see were mostly in the northern end of the county, north of Saluda. So moving forward, we have the funding through the grant through FY18 to continue the program and hopefully be able to report back on what the improvements are. For FY19, we have talked with the River Communities Foundation and they will entertain an application from us for half of the. an application from us for half of the local match for FY '19 and hopefully for FY '20 as well. So what I would like for you to consider, and what we will be submitting to Matt and with our budget request, is that you consider for FY '19, increasing your contribution by half of the cost of the, to keep the second bus operating, which is about $18,000. The idea being that we can keep this going for a couple more years. I know the long term for the Community Foundation would be that the county would take it over, but we can continue to work with that foundation and any other grants, funding we can find to keep it going. So I just wanted to update you, answer any questions, let you know where we stand. If there is interest from the board, then I will apply in March or April, when the application is due for River Counties, for the one-half of the local funding for fiscal year '19 and hopefully '20 as well, if I can do it at the same time. If that's not your interest, then we will go back to the one bus in the county and continue service like that.
Gentlemen, I think when the original request came through for the second bus, we knew that for '19, that some more financial responsibility would fall to us. And I commend you for going to the Communities Foundation to try to cut that in half for us anyway, because $36,000 is the number that I sort of remember, and that's two times the '18 that you're talking about. And certainly with this increased ridership, I feel like we're going in the right direction.
Yeah, we're definitely on that, because you know, it also helps benefit the upper end of the county.
Yep.
Where it hadn't been able to serve, but now can serve it.
Okay.
The grant money you can apply.
Well, I will apply, and they've been very supportive.
You can't hire.
That was the purpose of our meeting with them.
Yeah, to see what we could do. And so I will continue in that direction, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a Happy New Year.
Too. All righty, we'll move on to regular agenda items. We'll talk about amended fee schedule for electrical permits. David?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, sir.
On our current electrical applications, we have a photovoltaic line. It's only for 50 bucks. When I, it was put on there a couple of years ago when photocells were becoming very popular to be put on dwellings. That's what that 50 dollars was kind of designed for, to cover those costs. We are starting to see more and more applications for larger systems, commercial-type systems that are not part of a Dominion power affiliate or affiliation type thing, that I don't believe 50 dollars is going to cover the county cost. And that's why I have asked to include a line for commercial photovoltaic systems, and it's, would be set at $1 per kilowatt of power generated. We have one application that's currently kind of in the works. It'd be somewhere in the neighborhood of 680 kilowatts power generated, and it's not part of a Dominion system. And it's going to take quite a few hours to inspect and keep all that going. So right now, I don't have any way to pay for it, other than just the 50 bucks. That's, this would need to be advertised and made part of our current fee schedule.
Question? Go ahead, if I may, please.
Yes, sir.
So your residential, I'm just looking at this one. Your photovoltaic system for a resident is 50 bucks.
It's 50 bucks regardless, and they're not very, that's pretty much a one-stop. After it's all installed, go look at it. Takes about 20 minutes or so at the most.
Okay.
These larger systems, they are going to take probably several trips, and it's quite involved, a lot of plans reviewed to it.
Okay, so that'd be $1 per kilowatt.
Generated.
Generated, okay.
Yeah, and the part of their application would, they have to tell me how big the system is, how much power is going to be generated, and that's what the fee is based on.
Can I ask that question?
Go ahead.
So it might make sense to specify DC or AC is one thought?
Yeah. There is a difference, and after I sent this out, I realized what I had done, and if this has, when we go to advertise it, we can say AC or I would recommend AC.
My other thought, and just the above board, this is kind of what I do for a living, and I actually run around with the checks to the counties when I'm getting my permits. And you see a wide range of fee structures and all kinds of different attempts on how to calculate it and do it correctly. And I guess my question to you, David, have you considered looking into third-party outfits and getting their pricing and then sort of backfitting what that would look like? Because I've seen a lot of inspection agencies in rural areas that just don't have the staff to come out and do the inspections, you know, in so many different parts of the array, and it swamps them. And...
No, I have not. To answer your question, no, sir, I have not looked into a third party.
I have a question, David. On oversight, Mr. Mansfield and I were discussing this when we met to practice this agenda last week, just in case the election turned out the way that it did. And I was thinking that these were fees for new construction, but looking at air handler or range or water heater and that sort of thing, what is the oversight for that? Because I wasn't aware that we needed to have a permit to change out an electric range and therefore how to collect that $2.
If it's part of a new construction, the 240-volt circuits, which is the electric range, the heat pumps and air handlers, the water heaters, that kind of thing, those are added in.
Okay, so this would be a permitted piece of construction and add-on or whatever else. It wouldn't apply to the HVAC guy going out and changing an air handler on somebody's heat.
No, sir.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to make sure.
In other words, if your stove blew up tonight, you can go get another one and plug it right back in.
Not a problem. Correct. Yeah. This is, this fee schedule is, it's been reworked several times. We used to charge by the box that's put in the wall, and that got to be kind of like double billing, because we were also charging by the number of circuits and also the panel size. But I did adjust that so it seemed more fair, at least in my eyes, anyway. And I don't believe we're losing money as far as my time versus what we're charging, which is what the fees, as far as state is concerned, that's what the fees are designed to, is to at least cover county costs, not necessarily make us profit.
What, does this compare to old fees that we had, or is this sort of on the new side? Did you have some?
The only thing new on this electrical application is adding the word residential, where it says residential photovoltaic system, 50 bucks. Add residential there, and then a new line for commercial photovoltaic system at $1 per AC kilowatt generated.
David, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
We're going to have these places popping up, like at Bob's Hole. I don't know how many acres that's going to be. Are you physically have to go to each panel and look at it to make sure it's hooked up correctly? How does David's self go do this?
Specifically, the one at Bob's Hole is under Dominion Energy or its affiliates. They are exempt from county fees and therefore my inspection.
So that's how you go handle that, too?
That's how I'm going to handle that. I don't have a thing to do with that one. It's just like Dominion Power going out and building a new transmission line. I have nothing to do with that.
Okay, like a new one that I'm in the village.
Correct. Or a substation. I have nothing to do with it.
That's how Dominion wants to operate, but the way the market works is there's developers and EPCs that go and build these things, and then they eventually sell them to the utility, to Dominion. And all of those outfits don't have the same behind-the-fence ability to hide the way the utility does.
So what about the one up in Churchview, up in my area? Now, that's not through Virginia Power.
If it's not through Dominion or one of its designated affiliates, then I get it, and we get the fees.
We get fees.
And if a dollar per kilowatt is not enough, we may be looking at third-party, and I'll have to come back to you. But this was a, this was a beginning.
You probably weren't anticipating a recommendation from one of us, but I would make it more like a buck fifty, and I would do DC and be high early and let them complain to us, rather than find out that we didn't get enough money for our inspections.
That's certainly a recommendation from the board that we can put in. Like I say, I'm here for your approval to advertise, so we can advertise it however the board would like to have it.
Advertise it high and lower it.
The guidance I've given building and planning in the past is I don't want to be the highest, I don't want to be the lowest, but I want to be in that middle ground uncomfortably high, in that middle ground.
And the issue with solar is it rolls state by state as the incentives work out, as the brown power prices start to work out, and Virginia's just starting to pop, so it's all over the board on the permits. And even some of the states that are a couple of years ahead of us, you still see 10x difference between the low and the high. So from, you know, trying to protect our county, I want to make sure that A, we don't run David Ragan, but B, that if we end up finding out that there is a demand for three or four of these in the county, we don't end up being under budget. Because those projects have the money in them for these things, they just do, and we shouldn't be putting ourselves at risk to be competitive on this front.
I agree with that.
So what would, well, back...
As Betty has stated, you can advertise higher and always come down, but you can't advertise lower and then go up.
Gentlemen, what is your pleasure? Do you want to adjust this fee schedule as Mr. Lewis's recommendation and go ahead and adopt it?
I'm not sure.
You got to have a public hearing next month.
Anyhow.
Right.
This is what you'll advertise for publicly.
So we'll be moving forward with the public hearing on the new fees?
Do you tell me what to advertise for? Yes, sir.
You want me to make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead. That's your first motion.
So I would move that we change just the commercial photovoltaic system rate to $1.50 per KW DC generated, and that we remove the hyphens from photovoltaic.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
He seems to know what he's talking about.
Okay. I could do that. Yes, sir.
Do you have a motion and a second on something I don't understand? Is there any further discussion?
With your class.
If not, we'll go for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, David.
Thank you. We will get this in the works.
Thanks, David.
All righty, moving on to Item B, Go Virginia Funding. And I've got a note on here that either Wayne or Matt's going to address that.
I'll take a step at it first, and Wayne will probably help me out as we go into this. We got an email from Liz Povar, who is the staff for the Middle Peninsula Alliance, stating that, you know, our support resolution was clear, but they needed a little bit more specificity when it comes to financial support. They have until tomorrow to get some information to the state. What we're asking for in this request is just a motion and a vote from the board to support these projects of up to $5,000 if approved. If they're not approved, of course, there's no financial obligation on our part, but in an abundance of caution, that's kind of what they were looking for on the Go Virginia. Had some discussions with the Virginia Rural Coastal Design Institute that indicate there may not be any local match needed for that, but in an abundance of caution, go ahead and authorize up to $5,000 for each project. And we can get a letter to Liz Povar and to the MPA, and they can get everything submitted that they need to tomorrow.
Does this get us, as you say, a seat at the table?
It does.
Oh, okay.
Do you know, Matt? It's also based on how many localities put in, because it's somewhere between $3,500 to $4,500, based on the cities all the counties. But it's where we can get them.
Okay.
But we have...
That's what we're discussing.
However, we don't pay anything unless it goes through.
Right.
It's got to go through before we pay anything.
As of now, I think all the localities are participating, so that could be along to $2,300 ranges opposed to $5,000. But in an abundance of caution, I would recommend, so we don't have to keep coming back month after month and doing more.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the funding for our Go Virginia attempt for the, what you want to call it, Pamukka Net? And what's the other thing?
Virginia Rural Coastal Design.
Virginia Rural Coastal Design Institute.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the Go Virginia money?
Just to clarify, for up to $5,000.
Up to $5,000, yes, I'll put that in mind.
That needs to be in the letter. There was a lot of discussion on that point when you adopted it last month, but they need it specific.
Okay, if there be no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. Pages 72 through 74 in your packet is a very aggressive schedule for the budget calendar.
And it's my understanding the board received a supplemental by email with a minor change to it. That would be the one that I would want to recommend the board adopt today. And the change added the Middlesex Public School Salary Study, Compensation Study, which is scheduled to be heard on Friday, January the 5th at 1:00 p.m. to the budget calendar. That's a joint work session with the school board that we kind of entered into in the last joint work session, where we heard the county's compensation issues and compensation study presented. And we have one decision to make before you adopt this, and that is the Monday, February 2nd, or Friday, February the 16th budget work session, where you will entertain agencies, organizations, officers, and departments to present their budget requests to the board.
Did you mean the 2nd or the 12th?
Yeah.
12th or 16th?
12th or the 16th. And the reason for that is that Friday, February 9th, has generally been the date the board has held in the past, but that's the date the Chairs Institute is being held. And I know we have two members going to Chairs Institute this year. So that would not work for the chair and the vice chair.
What? Oh, it wouldn't?
No, they're going to be in...
I got to see you present.
All righty then, do we...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I only want to make one other notation that was brought up at the last meeting, and I just want to remind the board, not that you need to make any changes, but for the April 19th, that's an evening hearing, I will not be present. That is my local government attorney's conference, and I'll be in Roanoke. So again, you do not have to reschedule, but I just want you to understand I will not be present for it.
Very good. It hasn't really been the expectation that the county attorney has.
That's correct.
You're welcome to attend anything that you want to, but the expectation, I don't believe was there that you...
Not for the public hearing.
Okay.
Whenever my board is present, you would want your county attorney present.
Well, absolutely, absolutely.
But just want to make you aware of that one.
So can we make a decision on the 12th versus the 16th?
I would ask y'all to do so first, just to, for clarity purposes. You're basically looking at the following Monday or the following Friday.
Mondays are better than Fridays.
Those two dates.
9:30 a.m.
And that would be 9:30 in this room.
That's in February.
Yes, sir. I can do either one.
I have a conflict on the 12th. It won't work for me on the 12th. So is the 16th the decent?
I'm okay with the 16th.
Oh, it's the 16th. Good? Okay.
We'll try the 16th.
I think we're out.
Matt, the one on Tuesday, February the 6th, when's the legislative day in Richmond? The 6th or the 7th?
I believe it's the...
All right, the Rural Caucus Dinner is the 6th, I think. Betty, I'll get with you on that.
I think that's the 7th. And I think legislative day is on the 8th, because the Chair Institute starts the day after.
Because I got to go to the...
Okay. I think that's the case. We'll get on the website and make sure.
Yeah, please do, because, I mean, one plan won't stop circles, but anyway, what I'm saying is we will, that's the only one I would actually think would be a conflict for me. I'm just looking through.
Can you go back to January 5th and tell us what you've changed on January 5th?
Yes, sir. You have a list of the items, topics of discussion for that work session. You have Item A, which is HRSD sewer studies, where I'm going to be asking the board for action on the amended agreement, Amendment 2 or addendum 2, the memorandum of understanding that was executed back in July, and which specific sewer studies the board may want to pursue, so we can go ahead and greenlight that. The next is Middlesex County Foundation and Economic Development update for a workforce housing and microbrewery project update. That, I think Michelle Brown and Bruce D. Simone are going to come in with members of the foundation board and brief the board of supervisors on the potential for our housing project and the economic development project, and some revitalization potential of the Cook's Corner properties that may make the county and the foundation and the EDA very eligible. Corner properties that may make the county and the foundation and the EDA very eligible for what's known as a vibrant communities grant. And then item C was the board's strategic budget goals, and really, we can reposition that however the board like it. This is the board's opportunity, and really what amounts to a work session kicking off the budget process for each one of you to give staff some guidance on what you're looking for out of this budget strategically and holistically, so we can start incorporating that into our future work sessions and presentations that will be forthcoming in February and in March. And last but not least, at one o'clock that afternoon is the Middlesex County Public Schools Salary and Compensation Study. That should wrap up the meeting unless we have to move one of those items till after that. This is a joint work session with the school board, with Steve Minor presenting the school board, or the county schools portion of the compensation study.
So item D is an addition to what was sent out in the packet?
It's a.
We've already had an email.
Yes, sir.
But it's an addition.
Because the board had already agreed to do it, and it just got left off of that version that was sent out.
All right, well, with the addition of item D on 1:00 PM on January fifth, and the February sixteenth date adopted for the budget work session, what is your pleasure for this schedule?
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, just real quickly, not to add confusion to it, but we're pretty much guaranteed to be closed tomorrow because of the snow. There may be the need for a late opening on Friday morning, and usually a late opening is at 10:00 AM. That would be the other suggestion change to this, just in an abundance of caution, go ahead and start the work session at 10:00 AM as opposed to 9:30.
I knew that.
There you go.
With the 10:00 AM opening, with the addition of D, and February sixteenth being the budget work session, what is your pleasure?
I would move we accept all those changes and.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, it's not an announcement, but I'd just like to tell you, I may be undergoing some more chemotherapy coming up, so I'll be going through this minefield, but I'll notify you or staff when I can make it and when I can, okay? At least I'll be that pair.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, item D, Matt?
Yes, sir. Well, at your seat, I think we're going to pass these out, is a finance resolution that TD Equipment needs to handle our lease on the voice-over IP equipment. I was scheduled to give this update in my manager's report, but I'm going to bump it up in light of us receiving the financial documents and need of taking action on this one item. In your packet and my report is a kind of a summation of a project heretofore.
You're welcome.
I'm turning into it now, so bear with me. First of all, the reason for the delay, we worked with Attronica for quite some time, Attronica and Cisco, to get a suitable purchase agreement that was executable by the county and the school system. The board is aware that we did finally get that purchase agreement just prior to the Christmas holidays, and it was timely, because us having gotten that at the time we did, we were able to work out with Cisco certain project incentives that they had going on pre-holidays that actually make this project less expensive and lowers our overall payments. The downside to this is we went through our rate lock that was established in November by many days, and of course, since then, there's been a lot of volatility in the rates. As we've come to understand from Ms. Maggie Morris and Lori Ann LeCortella, I'm going to murder that, but with TD Equipment Finance, the rate we have locked now after substantial volatility in the market is 2.55 percent. Now, the good news is, the overall payment is lower than what was previously approved, and of course, the overall project cost is lower as well than what was previously approved. We received the financial documents yesterday. Of course, county offices were closed, we've reviewed those. Heather and I both are still reviewing some aspects of the lease agreement. It seems to me to be a pretty standard lease agreement that they've used in the past. This lease agreement would pretty much encompass what we've agreed to, what we've negotiated with them heretofore, and that is, we make the first payment at the outset, along with a small fee for having an escrow account. We make that at the outset, and then we have four annual payments, and then the matter's paid off. The first payment, I think, is in the amount of, Betty, do you have that number handy?
The first payment?
The first payment that we'll be doing. This, real quick, while Betty's looking for that actual number.
One hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents, and that includes the fifteen hundred dollars.
Fifteen hundred for the escrow account.
Yes, whatever.
This first payment is paid for in large part with surplus monies that were turned in by the school system in their budget from last year, and that's kind of what kicked this project off back in the summer, is the realization that they were turning a substantial surplus back to the county's fund balance, and that they had this project kind of in the wings on their capital improvements plan, and of course, we had ours on our capital improvements plan, so kind of a nexus happened on a line of plants, so to speak, and the county and the school did a joint voice-over IP project to a vendor that they had selected, to a cooperative procurement, to VCU. Long story short, we analyzed the different lease terms that we had received from three. TD Equipment was the best and still is. That's where we are now. We finally got a purchase agreement that was executable, and Dr. Pete and I did that shortly before Christmas holidays, and this is where we are in terms of financing.
This is one Kevin was working on right up to the gun.
This is the one Kevin and Heather and I and Dr. Pete and Steve were working on, but Steve and Kevin took the lead on.
Okay, very good, John.
Matt, you said that we've blown through the rate windows and the rates have gone up, but the overall cost has gone down. I didn't hear you explain that.
I can speak to that. The overall cost that we had agreed to back in November or October, and then ratified in November, well, the vote was in November, was six hundred and eighty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty cents. The cost that we were able to get from Cisco shortly before Christmas was ten thousand dollars lower. That's six hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty cents. The payment, the overall payment from November was to be one hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight and twelve cents. The revised payment after the Cisco savings were achieved, even in light of the rate increase, is less at one hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand and ninety-seven cents.
You had to explain that to me, I just wanted to make sure.
I wanted to get it in the minutes, too.
We all clear with that?
You know, we're happy with the project cost, and we're very pleased with what we're getting for the money, and being that the project cost is overall lower, we want to proceed with closing on the lease.
Gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we go ahead and approve the resolution for the lease, please.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, so ordered.
A quick question, Matt.
Yes, sir.
Forgive me for being the new guy.
No, no, it's fine.
But.
Well, you're the rookie.
That's right, that's right.
Nice man.
But, you know, the question is about how we violated the rate lock window. Is it something we knew was happening and we made a conscious decision, or did we flub?
No, it was not us at all. This is Attronica.
Yeah, we worked with Attronica steadily right up until, really, right before Christmas on getting this purchase agreement to us.
So, general practice in your department is, you're very aware of those dates, and you're letting us know, hey, we need to make a decision one way or the other, this is the deadline, this is the cliff, because I think interest rates are going to continue to work against this.
Yes, sir.
These kind of things could really not come out favorably in the future if we miss those. So I get it, it's not you, but it also gives me a little bit of pause about Attronica knowing that.
Duly noted, and one thing I will add to that, as the economy heats up, interest rates are going to continue to increase, so we've got some fairly large projects facing the county and the water authority, and potentially sewer, not least of which, and broadband authority too, depending. It's one of those things that we're going to try to endeavor to stay on top of with our bond counsel and with partners like TD, who routinely post some of the best, most appealing rates we found, just to stay abreast of it, so, you know, we can keep you all in line with where they're headed, and if we do need to lock in something, we can take decisive action to do so.
Get him going.
Get him going.
I will state, though, a lot of these forms have to be turned in by Friday, and a lot of them need the Chair's signature. So do we need any authorization on that, or do you have everything you need for that, Betty?
I have them all here for the Chair to sign.
Very good.
It's quite a formidable stack.
Yes.
On that front, too, just thinking about the weather and the Go Virginia deadline tomorrow, are you okay to get that done, no matter what the weather does?
Yes.
I will be in the.
I'll take care of it.
Vadermobile, taking documents anywhere you need to take.
Safe.
Safe.
Vadermobile.
I live close enough, I can walk.
Is that thing four-wheel drive?
I understand the chairman's bought a deuce and a half, too, so.
It's on the way.
It's on the way, so we have transportation.
As long as the internet stays up, I can work.
Alrighty, Madam County Attorney, do you have the item to bring before the board?
I'd be remiss, Mr. Chairman, if I didn't follow up to Mr. Coons' comment. I think that's a very insightful attempt to ask that, and I'd like to stress again that this should not be taken as a reflection of county staff. Kevin and myself, but Kevin mainly, worked extremely hard to get a contract, and unfortunately, we can't make somebody produce something that won't produce it. But that's very important moving forward, and just want you to know, we took it very seriously, and I shared his same concerns. Beyond that, the radio tower project continues moving forward. We've got good progress there. We've been continuing our weekly meetings, but beyond that, sir, I have nothing else to add unless the board has any questions for me.
With respect to the radios, I think, I was talking to Mr. Walker, the cutover date and the testing of the system would be the most stringent after the leaves are on the trees, so I don't think that there's a big push right now to consummate that. Is that correct?
That's correct. They have some urgency on their part to line up things with their contractors and subcontractors, but, you know, for our part, we had waited a good solid year, maybe longer, for the American Tower Agreement to get finalized and all of that.
And a few more months to test it under the hardest conditions.
From our part, we would prefer to have the cutover testing in April and May, while we do have some canopy and leaf cover, just so we get the best possible results.
What is the, to our warranty on the radios?
I'll have to look into it, but I believe the warranty actually starts upon the cutover and acceptance, but I will look at that.
But, yeah, Harris is very meaningful, and they recognize that we're concerned about the tree foliage and the testing, so.
For the benefit of the public, I just wanted them to understand why. We had a bona fide delay, and now this delay could be something that would be in our best interest. Does that take care of the county attorney's report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir, just a couple of things. I've covered the voice-over IP. Of course, we're going to be talking in greater depth at the work session on Friday on Hampton Road Sanitation Sewer Projects. You have a copy on our report in your packet. If you have any questions or comments, please ask. One thing of particular note I wanted to bring to the board's attention is, the Central Middlesex Volunteer Rescue Squad did essentially stop operating emergency services as of December 31st. We have a memorandum of understanding that the board had already approved in place with the Middlesex County Rescue Squad to take over that coverage. Of course, the Board of Supervisors and the county-funded ESS crews are still running 24/7. It basically just is the leadership and who has authority over that unit. It's now Middlesex County Volunteer Rescue Squad. There are a number of issues. Mr. Mansfield and I attended a meeting with the squads, their legal counsel, and their leadership. There are a number of nuances that have to be worked out with the closure of Central Middlesex Volunteer Rescue Squad, or the Urbana Squad as it's known. Their intention is to stay open as an organization for a couple of months to wrap things up in a timely and orderly fashion, as their legal counsel, Mr. Jimmy Ward, works with Middlesex County Volunteer Rescue Squads and legal counsel, Rob Brooks, to kind of change or transfer assets and different items. And of course, there may be a role for the county to play in that. There'll be more to report on that later, but I did want to bring that to your attention. And David Lehman's employment could not have started a day earlier, because I can tell you, I mean, Mr. Mansfield was there with me on those calls often. We spent a lot of time right before Christmas working with the rescue squads on this issue, and there'll probably be a little bit more time to work on afterwards, but we're getting there. Last thing that's not in my report but is timely, David Lehman shared with me the last weather briefing that they had received from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. He has some notes that he'd taken. Now, some of the notes he had taken, Ron Peeks had covered with you from VDOT, but I did want to let the board know that based on the forecast of weather reports and what seems to be a very timely blizzard hitting tomorrow, we've already taken steps to close the county offices tomorrow. We're going to be looking at the situation tomorrow to see what develops and whether there will be a need for a late opening on Friday. We believe there will be. It will more than likely be 10:00 AM, but we're going to see tomorrow. It's my understanding from David's notes, the governor is declaring a state of emergency for at least east from Virginia, maybe the whole state, and is what has kind of been depicted in the weather reports that we've received and what we've heard, the storm seems to be taking a jog to the west, which is not good for really the state of Virginia. And of course, he covered the fact that Middlesex now is the prevailing leader on accumulation as of right now, but that's still a forecast.
It's always good to be a leader.
Yes, sir.
Love leadership.
This is one we probably wouldn't want to be, but we've got it. The notes of particular interest, and what makes me want to mention this, is with wind gusts up to 45 miles an hour, you can have white-out situations.
That's almost blizzard conditions, man.
It is, and of course, if the bridge closes, then we definitely don't want citizens out on the road. We're going to be getting out a message to that effect.
Kind of light, dry snow is going to be drifting.
It's going to be blowing and drifting.
You watch Darth Vadermobile.
Yeah, exactly. With that respect, I think Ron's covered the rest.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Let's see, move down.
Oh, oh, one other thing. I'm sorry, I was saving the best for last. Thank you. Back in 2013, the Board of Supervisors had directed staff to revise several policies and implement several policies and procedures that were not in effect. One of them, and the most significant, was the purchasing and the procurement policy the county adopted. Now, it was, there were a lot of things going on, and we did a pretty good job at it. It was basically directed at establishing a up-to-date small purchasing procedure, and didn't get into a comprehensive or holistic evaluation of the county procurements and different state code, different aspects of that. It is my recommendation, based on some of the input we've received in recent months and some concerns the board themselves have expressed, that we initiate a comprehensive revision of the county's procurement and purchasing guidelines, holistic, comprehensive revision of all of the purchasing policies the county has, to develop a comprehensive policy that addresses some of the issues that I think Mr. Mansfield has brought up in the past, and others may want to address in a comprehensive fashion. To that end, the county attorney has looked into several sample policies around the area, various sizes, forms of the other counties. I would recommend the board consider appointing two of their members to a working committee that would consist of the two members of the board, myself, Betty Muncie, and the county attorney, Heather Lewis, so we can start the drafting and revision of what amounts to a fairly significant policy for the county. Just to remind the board members that were present back in 2013, the one we adopted in 2013 was meant to be, okay, that's good enough for now, but we need to come back and do a little bit more work to it at a later time, and it's my recommendation that now is the later time.
Thank you all for remembering that. That was on my radar and it's gone off, so. Is it appropriate to go ahead and name the two members of the.
You can now or during your board member comments, when you were going to do your other appointments, but we would recommend we have a meeting sometime soon in January, weather relating and holidays dependent, but we'd like to try to impanel the committee in January to look over what the county attorney has already provided in terms of sample and other county policies, and then I'm going to, based on the direction I received from that committee, start drafting the comprehensive review.
Thank you, sir. And we move in now to unfinished business. Mr. Bella, do you have anything on your?
No, sir.
No, sir, no, nor so have I. Thank you.
Mr. Coons, this is your first meeting, so I would presume you don't have any unfinished business yet.
I have no unfinished business.
That's a safe for some.
Mansfield?
Um, yeah, I, I've got two, two things. Uh, the first is Lancaster, as you know, was very successful in getting, uh, Dominion Power to run the lines under, under the water, as every, everybody knows, knows about that. Um, I'm probably the most enthusiastic person about that, because I believe that it will affect the real estate values in Middlesex County, and Lancaster has really, they've borne the complete cost of it. Unbelievably, probably around $400,000 total, along with, uh, the county itself put in, uh, 250 to 300, and then.
Jesus.
Couple, uh, organizations put in more. I would like to suggest that Middlesex County, pay $8,000 of, of that, probably $400,000, uh, for two, two reasons. One, because of the increase in property values it, it does for Middlesex County. And secondly, uh, it would show a great spirit of cooperation between Middlesex and Lancaster, which we may want, uh, to, to use in getting some kind of cooperation on boat tax, middle ground in the future. So I would like to make the motion that, uh, that we give to Lancaster County or the organizations that have helped, uh, win, fight against Dominion Power, $8,000.
Gentlemen, you've heard the motion. Do we have a second?
Haven't we discussed this before and turned it down?
Well, it's my recommendation that we sent a letter to Lancaster supporting whatever they wanted.
They said bury the cable, ignite and ice.
Yeah. But this is a new board, and so we can, um...
Well, how is that gonna cre, let me ask Pete, how is that gonna increase our real estate values here in Middlesex?
All right, if I could, we've got a motion, we need a second to discuss it.
All right.
I'm just, I'm not a supporter of Robert's rules, but we got off track before, so we have a motion. Uh, is there a second? Then that motion will die for lack of a second. And your second order of business?
Uh, the second order of business is gonna be more brief. Uh, I sent all of you, uh, good, thank you very much. Uh, this savings of both water and money for, uh, West, it used to be Westaco, uh, what is it now called?
Rock Ten.
Rock Ten.
Rock Ten. It may be changed again before, so don't get comfortable with that.
You all, you all probably read that, uh, McCallum was our, our past governor, was quite proud that, uh, McCollum, I'm sorry, uh, was quite proud of the fact that he reduced by 69% the, or 69 million gallons per day, uh, the permitted draws of the various organizations, including, uh, Rock Ten, or Rock whatever it is. Uh, 69 million gallons. This would, would reduce by another four, uh, four million gallons, uh, per day. Uh, the Rock Ten, or whatever, ten, whatever their name is, uh, draw, but it would also give them, uh, $2,500,000 based on the cost of, of drawing, drawing water. You don't just draw water at no cost and pump it five, five miles. Uh, that cost is 25 cents a gallon, so if you look at, at 14 billion gallons, that comes to, uh, a savings of quite, quite a bit over, uh, $2.5 million for Rock, Rock Ten. I would like to have the board, uh, send a letter agreeing that this is a good idea. However, I thought, started out by telling you that I'm not gonna put that forth today, because there's some more things that I need to look into before I make it, but I would like you to look over this and understand where I'm, where I'm coming from, and I'm not trying to, I'm really trying to help both our state, us, and, quite frankly, the paper mill, all, all three.
So you don't want action on that tonight?
No, I'm not asking for any.
While, while you were studying, if you'd do me a favor, um, I'm interested in this. I think this is a, is a, is a problem in the Commonwealth, and, and everybody should be interested. I don't know what our standing is in writing whoever we might write, saying whatever we might say. So I would be interested in knowing what our, what you see our standing is, and also the calculation for the electricity to pump the water is something that I, I don't, I don't understand.
Yeah, that, that's a fair, the, the cost of pumping is a fairly standard number in, uh, so, so that's, that's no problem.
Okay.
Our, our standing is more of a problem. We, we don't really have a standing, other than DEQ, anytime they make a decision like this, they are supposed to let us know, and we do have the right to, to make statements as to whether we agree with it or, or, or don't agree with it.
So you'll probably present this as an agenda item for next meeting?
Uh, please, yes.
Okay. Alrighty, that completes unfinished. Mr. Miller, do you have any new business?
No.
Mr. Coons?
Not right now.
Not right now.
Mr. Mansfield?
Can we at least send Lancaster a letter and thank them for the work that they did?
To who?
Uh, in, in the Dominion Power line.
No.
If we're not sending them any money, I don't, uh, I, I think that's just drawing attention to the fact that we're not helping them.
I think so.
That would be my, be my thinking.
My feeling, too.
Yeah, we sent a letter of supporting whatever it was that they wanted to do. That's, that's sort of. Is that our feeling?
That's my feeling.
You know, the one thing that I heard is that there is potentially an opportunity to talk with some of our neighboring counties, in this case Lancaster, about, uh, a truce on boat tax war. And one of my reluctance is to support sending money regarding the lines, uh, lawyer fees, is that, it's, that's not how one negotiates these things, in my mind. In my mind, we get that meeting with some supervisors in Lancaster and say, hey, have you given thought to where your revenues are gonna come from now that you've lowered, lowered your boat taxes? I mean, all of us are in, no pun intended, the same boat. We need some revenue, we need a diversified ta, diversified tax base, um, but we also don't wanna see our boats banging back and forth across the river hurting our, our industries. And I think we need to think more regionally, and we need to have that conversation with them, and that would be a more appropriate time to say, hey, you know, when, when we have some of these intra-county issues, such as the bridge, and that's not going away anytime soon, just 'cause the power line issue is decided, but when we have these, let's develop closer relationships, um, so that we're not voting on $8,000 here or $8,000 there, but we're talking more proactively about how our decisions in one county impact the neighboring county. And, and where I, I'll, I'll wrap up, 'cause I'm getting long-winded here, but just hearing Dr. Gretz come in and talk about 64 similar rural counties getting together, that's more of what we need to do, where we understand, hey, that's great, one county can go down there and zero out their taxes, and then others can follow that, and they can see short-term gains, but if they're harming us regionally, nobody wins. And in the meantime, we all have less taxes coming in, and we're all wondering which program we're gonna cut next.
Thank you, sir. We'll take supervisors' comments and reports in reverse order. We'll start on this side.
Oh, I, I thought I just did it.
I, I kinda thought you did, too, but I'll give you another opportunity.
Yeah, I, I attended PDC, uh, did, did a good listen for Jack White and also J. Coles, uh, because, uh, they're, they're coming off the board. Uh, and also, um, you talked about the lobby.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, well, you took care of the lobby part, you know, part of the lobby, and, uh, that's it for me.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
I attended the PDC meeting also, and we're having, the reason that the lobbyist is, is going to be hired is simply that, that we have so many issues here in the Middle Peninsula, and we, we, we gotta get somebody there at the door with these people and in their faces to tell them what, what we need and what, John, it's exactly what you're saying. If you go in there as a unified group, you do a whole lot better. That's the whole thing about the PDC right down here. Economic, regional economic development, it'll help us all through the long one. Just 'cause a guy drives from here to Gloucester, 'cause a new plan has opened up, that's okay with me. At least, at least he's employed this type stuff. But what we did, we did that, and it was a real good meeting concerning, uh, how everybody felt about the possibility of lobbying, but I, I made the point, I didn't vote for it because the, the company they picked, I used to work for, and I didn't wanna get in, so I, I, I abstained my vote on that. But anyway, uh, the, the, you need professional help when you go up to Richmond nowadays. You come in as, as Joe Blow citizen, and the guy's gonna be nice to you because he wants your vote. Well, when you go up to the door, next please, and, and that's the way it works. But, but if 50 or 60 people come in there, well, wait a minute now, these guys are representing this many counties, and they're gonna make somebody stand tall in that attention. So, like I said, I, I, it was a good meeting at the PDC. I'm glad we recognized those gentlemen and their years of service. Mr. Jesse, I don't think we forgot anything. I, uh, but we've got, they're gonna call out, out of those 60 bills what Keith will be, be concentrating on. So that, but we wanna kinda guide him to where we were, we're thinking about where our issues lie, and, and that's exactly what we did. But it was a real good meeting, and that's about the only one I attended, and that is my report, which ends this section of it.
John, did you have anything in comments that you wanted to add?
I did go to Sands Anderson's training in Richmond in December for new members of the Board of Supervisors, and made some contacts with some other new supervisors and school board members around the area, and, uh, learned about FOIA and all of, all of.
The doing, the doing rule, I bet.
And you still wanna be a supervisor. That's amazing, man.
Anybody that wants to run for the board ought to have to go to that first.
Yeah, go to that first.
I'm, I'm proud to report that I was kinda the nerd in the class, and I had a whole bunch of questions, and I had a couple of the lawyers sort of looking at each other like, wow, this guy did some homework on the way in, so.
Good man.
All right, well, I'm saving the long-winded to last. My activities over the past month, I, uh, my wife and I did Santa Claus at, uh, Social Services and at the museum. Uh, we had a Water Authority meeting, and, uh, we have, uh, we've signed our contract with the engineers. We're, we're sort of past the point of no return, if you will. Uh, we're, we're going forward. Took the tour of the workforce housing across the river, was very impressed with that. And we had a, uh, call meeting of the airport committee. Uh, the, the property at the north end of our runway has changed hands, and the new owner is very excited and very, uh, much wanting to work for the county on a runway extension or realignment to, to cause our field to be safer. Very excited about the possibilities that we have there. Okay, beyond that, one of the chairman's responsibilities is, uh, committee appointments. And this is particularly, uh, difficult this time, because Bob LaBeuf was very active, and Marsha Jones is retired, so between the two of them, we've got a number of, of vacancies. And I don't wanna assign anybody anything that they can't do or don't really wanna do, but we've got a lot of positions that need to be filled. Um, one of mine was as the, uh, jail authority alternate, and, uh, John has agreed to be our representative on the jail authority, and I was wondering if Betty could be the alternate? Okay, cool, that takes care of that. I'll stay on the Water Authority, uh, Joint Finance Committee. One of our citizens spoke to, uh, spoke to the Budget Committee, and John has agreed to serve. Uh, I feel awkward appointing myself. Is it, is it the board's desire that John and I serve together?
Keep going.
On the budget? Okay, 'cause Bob LaBeuf and I had done it for the last two years. Alrighty, moving right along. We've got an opening for a supervisor to, uh, be on the Planning Commission. That is something that we've, need, need somebody on.
Why do we have a supervisor on the Planning Commission?
Well, that's something, Mr. Miller, to look into.
Is that the bylaws? Why do we need somebody?
The, the way the code reads, it's my understanding, is the board may and the BZA may. That's the only exception to BZA. I think they're allowed participation as the liaison on the Planning Commission, if my memory serves. Board has always had a liaison member.
But they may have one on there.
They have one, not a shall.
Not a shall, but a may.
Can we look into that, and then we'll figure out what to do? 'Cause it, it, in my previous life, the city council people were not on the Planning Commission. There was no, that, that, just sort of a conflict. It just didn't, didn't appear to work right, so. All right, moving down, uh...
Mr. Chairman, if I may clarify, so you're asking, um, I'm assuming you're asking me to confirm?
Confirm or deny that we need a representative on the Planning Commission, 'cause I would love it if we didn't.
We may do that before we adjourn tonight.
And maybe even, if, if it does seem to say that we need somebody, what does it take to change that so that we know?
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, Mr. Mansfield, you gonna stay on the Museum Board and the Rappahannock River Basin Commission, uh, Community Policy and Management? Uh, you desire not to serve on that in the coming year? Is that what I'm?
That's the CPT.
Yep. Okay. Any chance of changing your mind on that?
Pete didn't like it.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll stay on.
William? Okay, thank you, sir. 'Cause it, like I said, it's particularly, uh, difficult this year with, with two, losing two very active people to try to fill all those appointments.
If I may, for, for what it's worth, Pete, on that one, having heard what we just heard about the transportation costs and of these, I forget the name of it, private placement, daycare.
Private day place.
Um, I'm, I'm happy to, to sort of be your right-hand man in an unofficial way in exploring how we maybe bring some local jobs here and get our kids and, and our, our drivers not spending so much time elsewhere and sending all our money out of the county. I think there's something there that we need to find a champion, so.
I see.
Okay.
I'll get behind you with that.
I, I will definitely serve on it with, with John's help.
Mr. Jesse, you good with Health Department Liaison, Sports Complex Commission, Oyster Festival, Planning District Commission, Parks and Rec, and Middle Peninsula Economic Development Resource Organization?
Cool.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All right, getting down to the, uh...
Change the name of that, right? That's the Middle Peninsula Alliance.
MPA, yeah.
Okay, MPA. Alrighty, getting down to the committees that Bob LaBeuf served on. Emergency Services Director and Emergency Services Committee are usually covered together. Um, I think that Mr. Jesse is eminently qualified to serve on that with his fire department experience.
Yes, sir.
And I would be willing to do it if he or somebody else doesn't rise to the occasion to do it. So, what's your pleasure? Don't say it.
I got a lot more please.
All right, I will, I will try to, I will try to assume that.
I feel compelled to say this, and I may regret it, but the code does allow the county administrator to serve in that capacity, though I'm not volunteering.
That's not how I heard it.
We just tell him to serve, not say it today.
Hannah, boy, I hear you. Why don't we, we'll talk about that and, and kinda...
Disclosure, it's called disclosure, not a volunteer.
Okay, the Middle Peninsula Chesapeake Bay Public Access Authority alternate, and I've asked Betty to be an alternate once, can I ask Betty to be an alternate twice?
Sure.
Speak up if, if it doesn't work for you, this is an alternate.
I don't know when they meet or when, so.
I don't either. I don't either.
This is, this is, which one, public access?
It's usually right after the local government managers' meeting on Fridays, second Fridays of every month at the, uh, PDC.
I'll find him. I'll just make sure Dave goes.
The Budget and Finance Committee, we've pretty well covered that. John has agreed to take Bob's place on that, and if it's y'all's desire, I will continue to serve on that with him. Uh, Middlesex Foundation, uh, John has stepped up and said that he would be interested in serving on that. Is everybody comfortable with, uh, John serving on the foundation? Okay, Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission, Matt is the alternate, but would like somebody else to take this on.
That bad, huh, Walker?
And I'm on the, uh, the Criminal Justice Association with the Commonwealth attorneys in the area. Uh, I will do it if no one else will.
Looks like you got it.
Well, that's a challenge this year with, with losing two very active people. Well, it's a challenge this year with losing two very active people.
And if I may, before I look like I'm shirking, just to elaborate briefly, one of the things the county administrators have come up with is the idea to support the lobbying efforts the PDC is employing.
Right.
Is to have county administrators go on key days and testify in front of select committees and House and Senate fact-finding committees, with different things of that nature. So that's going to be an added commitment on my part. I'm gonna need to be able to be at the General Assembly within a day or two's notice if need be to support the lobbyist efforts and the efforts of our liaison and others to try to champion these 42, now 43 bills of interest. So, yeah, I may be going to General Assembly a lot more this spring than...
If you would stay on until you convince somebody to take your place, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Middle Peninsula Jail Authority, and John has agreed to step up to that, and I do appreciate that. You're gonna, you're gonna enjoy the tour. I had knots in my stomach for three days after that steel door.
Oh, come on, Chick, didn't you have that bad, did you?
When I took the tour up there. Okay, the Virginia Peninsula's Public Service Authority. Pete, I understand you desire to serve on that.
Yes.
Very good.
But it's also my understanding, Matt, you're gonna...
I'm chairman until June 30th.
And so he will be till June 30th, and I'll take on for June 30th.
Okay.
Or July 1st.
And do we need...
July 1st.
It says we need an alternate.
I can move to alternate when Pete takes over.
Okay.
And I'll be alternate up till then.
Good.
That'll work.
Outstanding. All right, Bay Aging Board of Directors.
Marcia has asked...
Oh, she wanted to stay on that. As a citizen, a citizen can stay on.
Okay.
Okay. Matt, you're still Community Policy, Virginia Peninsula's Middle Peninsula Community Criminal Justice Board, Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission, and Middle Peninsula Broadband Authority. Very good. Kevin Gentry, Middle Peninsula Broadband, David Kreutz, Public Chesapeake Bay Public Access Authority. The only other thing left...
The two members for the Working Committee on the Policy Revision.
I hadn't forgotten that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was, I was...
Oh, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Back on broadband, I am on that committee as a, I thought now...
The authority. Yeah, you're on the authority.
The authority is the board at present, at present.
The organizational meeting, y'all will reconstitute yourself on that.
And that'll be in February.
Okay.
On this revamping of our purchasing, Mr. Mansfield has been very, very, very interested in this, and I would, I would hope that you would take the lead in that, and if we need one other member of the board, if you want to ask somebody to serve with you, or if you want somebody appointed, if nobody volunteers, we'll just, let's discuss it.
Yeah, I want to.
Can I do so in an unofficial capacity? I mean, do we need to really?
Yeah. We'll both be...
I'm happy to let you know that I'll be there for you, but I need to understand what this looks like in my real life.
Sure you do.
We'll try to have meetings that are commensurate with your needs, yeah.
Okey dokey. I think that that takes care of... How about my legislative liaison in my PDC? You forgot me. His two members...
You were way up high, and that's...
Oh, my Lord, I was...
You were somehow, you were somehow on the list that I missed.
Holy smoke. Thank you, Chick.
Legislative liaison and Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission.
Yes, sir.
You desire to stay on those two.
Thank you.
Okay, I think...
You got it.
We've got her halfway.
Could I just add one comment? Noticing how many of these we have, and your point that, you know, losing Bob and Marcia in the same timeframe is difficult, I do want to add that it's my intent to add a new line item here later in the year as we step through the budget, and I'm gonna approach the YMCA about being on their board to establish more accountability as we step through that budget process. But I'm not saying this will every year have to be something that we have to fill, but that is my intent.
Okay.
Just sharing that with the board.
Very good. All right, at this point, we would normally recess, which we...
Which we could do if we wanted, I hope.
Well, we can, we can do that, but we're gonna be moving from this meeting into closed session.
Yeah, I think you need to have the closed session. We may have to order dinner and...
Okay, so do we want to read that long and ball thing that you do?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Where are we going?
We just...
We're going into closed session.
We can have, we can have a recess, but we're going into closed session.
You know it, we'll have a recess, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, we need a motion from the board to convene in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.237-3711A1 for a discussion of matters involving personnels, specifically contact discussions for the county administrator and the county attorney. We also need to go into session pursuant to Virginia 2.2-3711A3 and A8. This is for discussion and/or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, and to that regard, consultation with legal counsel.
So moved, we're going to executive session. Mr. Chair? Motion seconded, discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Madam County Attorney, if you would read the motion for coming out of closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we need a motion to certify the following statement. To the best of the members' knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted in the motion by which closed session was called was considered or discussed in said closed session.
So moved, Mr. Chair. Second. Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Call for the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So ordered. At this point, the chair will entertain a motion to move the approach lights on the runway, on the north end of the runway at Hummel Field, onto county property and mount them in a recessed fashion so that a airplane propeller cannot strike them. Would somebody like to make a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Motion and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. The other item coming out of closed session is to authorize Matt to negotiate to buy real property that we discussed in closed session, which will be used for a public purpose.
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. We will now move into the public hearing on the rezoning of 2017-004 submitted by James Ward, and I believe the staff has a presentation for us, Dave.
A very brief presentation.
Presentation, sir.
I'll try to get everybody out of here as quickly as possible.
You're not gonna read all that.
I'm gonna zip through.
He's gonna do it.
He's been practicing three days.
Mr. Chairman, this is a rezoning application, 2017-004, where she just stated it was submitted by the board. What we're going for right here is a re, a proffer amendment from the original proffers that were approved back, and I believe it was 2004. We're gonna, what we're doing here is we're trying to fix a kind of a magnitude of errors. This is the property right here, it was originally rezoned to residential. This little piece here will be included in that rezoning because it's been incorporated with the larger piece. This is what the, this is our, this is what the comp plan has for future land use, and this shows the property. This is a subdivision plot that's recorded and narrative on the property information. Of course, this was approved by the board back in 2003. What we found out is that when a builder bought one of the lots, and when they came in for a building permit, we noticed that there were proffers on the property. And at that time, I think in the staff report goes into detail about how it went back and forth, Mike Sobriek was involved in it. The long and short of it, the proffers were never recorded. They were supposed to be recorded by the applicant, and they never were. This has created a cloud of title for the property that they were... There are a few stipulations. These were the original proffers. You can see they're rather vague. It just says in the range of 2,500 square feet. Both of these lots have similar language. Based on that consideration by the, extended by the board, the applicant came in and was given, granted approval for the subdivision that was about a year or so later. Of course, this is what I basically just explained, that we discovered there was an This is what's been proposed. You can see that Mr. Ward has given us proper language. These are proffers written by an attorney, so they're much better than the original proffers that were brought up by the applicant, who obviously did not have any legal experience. So the main thing here, we have a minimum square footage of all homes to be about 1,500 square feet of heated space. That's fairly direct. Staff definitely concurs with that. No manufactured homes, that's a little bit redundant because manufacturers' homes aren't permitted in a residential district, but in Casey County, everyone would haywire and allow them, this would obviously be restricted covenant or proffer. All lots in the subdivisions will be zoned residential, which I certainly concurs with that. And Mr. Humphries would be given the right to divide his property in half, which is basically affirmation of what we already know.
Did you say divide in half?
He would be able to divide his one lot into two lots, or not necessarily in half, but he could divide it however would meet the ordinance. One lot could be bigger than the other.
But, Mr. Kreutz, that would still be subject to your department's review of that subdivision.
That's correct. It still has to go through subdivision, meet the subdivision ordinance prior, and go through the application process. So we're not, this is just reaffirming the right to have that lot. There again, a little bit of language. This, that was my comment. This, these are additional language that Mr. Ward has submitted. We certainly appreciate his, everybody's efforts in this, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Ward, everybody kind of banded together, came together and tried to make, just to fix this. Again, we have a little bit more legal language. This would be all recorded with the proffers, and this time, we will guarantee the proffers will be recorded. Staff has looked at the proffer methodology. We feel that all these proffers are voluntary, they're the being offered, we feel. Planning Commission recommended unanimously with two members absent approval of this particular amendment, and staff recommends approval of this application exaclius. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes...
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Kreutz?
No, no, I haven't any questions.
No question. All right, well, according to my itinerary here, we open the hearing for comments from the public.
If necessary.
Do we have any?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, my name is Jimmy Ward. I represent Mr. and Ms. Humphries. John Hodges represents Bill St. Louis Custom Builders. John found out that the proffers had not been recorded, and there were some other issues. The Weidemann's are getting, are having health problems, so rather than trying to force them to do what they should have done, we got together and worked with Ms. Lewis and David, and they were very helpful to try to correct a mistake that had been made in the past. Three things come to my mind, and I need to get out of here quick because I want to get across that bridge before it starts snowing, but three things come. My mother's looking over my shoulder on the back side, and as Judge Folks used to say many times up there, he said, Jimmy, can't you take yes for an answer? But really, what comes to my mind is, I don't know how they got these damn proffers not recorded, when the last one I did with Oscar Barber, he walked me to the courthouse and watched it being recorded. So I don't think that's gonna be...
Different administration.
I don't think that's gonna be a problem this time, so thank you all so much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right, at this point, it looks like the applicant has the opportunity to make a presentation.
Mr. Chairman, are you closing the public comment period at this time?
Yes, excuse me, public, public comment is hereby closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody want to make a presentation representing the applicant?
No.
I know, I know. Comments from speakers?
Way back in the...
Bless you.
You all right, Pete?
All right, if there's no question or discussion by the board members, I guess we call for...
This, the only comment I'd like to have, I've been kind of following this case along, and this will alleviate a lot of problems for the owners of real estate because of this, the lack of proffers, and I'm just so glad that everybody got together and figured this thing out, and Dave, I want to thank you, Jimmy, Heather, all of you. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and move that we approve rezoning number 2017-004.
Second. Have a motion and a proper second, is there any further discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Next.
So ordered.
Jimmy, be careful going home, buddy.
Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Have to keep an eye on it because it's getting snoring in Virginia Beach, Orange and 3:00.
It's been snowing, I've lost your point for about 30 minutes.
Next item. Okay, next item is number 2017-003. Mr. Kreutz?
Yes, sir.
No, you might have spent night and day here.
We have, we have two applications this evening that are pretty much tagged together. If, obviously, the first one's denied, the second one can happen. But we're gonna go through the first one first. This is an ordinance amendment to allow, we're mending to allow a crematorium in general business. Originally, when this, Mr. Faulkner came in, we were looking at this, I looked through our ordinance, and at first, I didn't really see anything, and then I picked up on the fact that we have a, we already have a definition for a crematorium, and it's allowed only in light industrial. So that was probably at the inception of the ordinance, because it was probably back in the 80s. So we, the technology has come a long way, and we looked at this, and you could almost look at it as an accessory use, and some ordinances have allowed that. Since we already have it defined, it's set up this way, we just, the easiest thing to do is just to add it as a special exception use in general business. It was, it seemed to be the simplest, easiest process, and then run the special exception concurrent with that. So what the board is considering tonight is a crematorium in that particular district. And I can go through all this, and y'all are gonna look at me.
We know what a crematorium is.
We know what the answer is, let's just keep moving. So basically, Planning Commission recommended approval with two members absent as submitted. We're just adding that as the definitions in place, we're just adding it in general business. So I will turn this over to you, Mr. Chairman, for public comment.
Any questions of staff?
Any.
All right, then we'll open the hearing for public comments. Have anybody from the public to speak?
Thank you all for letting us be here tonight. My brother Billy and I really feel blessed to be the owners of the Funeral Home here in Saluda and in Tappahannock and in Matthews, now after our dad Charlie Bill, as most of you knew him, and Charles Bristow, served the communities for many, many years. So my brother Billy and I really, really feel honored to be a part of that now. And when I left, I was here for, both of us were here for quite a while, I was here from 78, 77 to 88, before I moved away for about 28 years. And when I left, it was 15% average cremation rate, and I moved back a little over a year ago, and it's over 50%. And so in the past, we've had to, we've certainly handled cremation services, but we've had to go outside of the area to actually do the cremation process. So we feel like it's time, actually past time, that we should have our own, and so we appreciate your consideration in allowing that to happen. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I have one question. And since you're located here in Saluda, then that means you can bring cremation from your Matthews location and your Tappahannock.
Yes, sir, we would do all of those.
Very good, thank you, that's all I want to know.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? I will close then the public comment period, and I guess that comment from the public was also the presentation of the applicant.
Yes, sir.
We got that covered all in one. So, we've got no rebuttal, we've closed the comments from the public, we'll entertain a motion on this.
I approve that we accept ordinance amendment number 2017-003.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion and a proper second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. So ordered. Mr. Kreutz?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Can you tell us about 2017-05?
Yes, sir.
And if y'all can take longer than five minutes, you guys may watch, just so.
Yeah, that's, you can see why.
You're just going to give us a brief description, right?
Yes, sir.
In presentation, good enough, all right.
Yes, sir. This is, this is the special exception to allow what they're actually proposing to do. Basically, we already have, now we have the, the special exception process in place in general business, so we can move forward. This, and this is a, a little narrative on the property. All of this is in your staff report. There we go, I'm going to move this along. Everybody in this community is familiar with this establishment, there's no need to dwell on anything too much. I will note that this, if anybody's interested, this particular addition's in the back, and they have a little narrative. They're actually going to have seating space, propose to have a little bit of seating space in this new room for families to, to be with their loved ones, I would imagine. So, of course, everybody's familiar with this building, I'm going to move through these. Of course, I've explained, in this particular case, the crematoriums were not a special exception use in general business, they aren't industrial, so we have this special exception process. The, the criteria that was, that was, that's standard indigenous to the, the board requirements to, to find the application in compliance, I, I've gone through all these. The applicant did a very good job of addressing all the different issues that may come up, the, the noise, the smoke, the fumes. I think the new technology abates a lot of that, that particular, those negative effects, so we, staff has run through these, and of course, this was in your staff report, you've read this, I'm not going to read this verbatim. The planning commission recommended unanimously with two members absent approval of special exception 2017-005, conditioned upon the following, of course, the use should meet the criteria of Article 11, Section 1149, and Article 20, Section 25B, which is the standard requirements needed for the board to approve it. Of course, any other site plan zoning or building code requirements, and of course, we want to make sure that they're complying with all federal, state, or local agencies that would oversee an operation such as this, so that would be contingent on any other final approvals. So, there you have my staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody have any questions of staff?
If God will. I've got a quick, quick question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mansfield.
Sure, I already know the answer to. The equipment that you use in the crematorium, you buy, is commercial, is it licensed in any way? Does it have any kind of code approval on it?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I think it's, I think it's U L listed. It's, it's approved by every state that they've gone to, of course, and they, they already have some in Virginia, and of course, we'll have to get the Virginia state approval as well.
Okay.
But yes, sir, it is licensed.
That's why I prefaced it with, I think I already know the answer.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll open the period of public comment.
Just, just real quick, it's my understanding too, and I think I picked it up either through the applicants or you, Dave, that there's actually a crematorium in downtown Richmond that operates the same equipment, very close proximity to the neighbors, but no issues at all, is that, is that correct?
I'm not sure exactly where, there, there are several in Richmond. I'm not sure about right downtown, but there are quite a few, and I know you were, you were talking about one that was in Hanover, I believe, that was in an area that was.
Well, we're, Hanover allows the use as accessory use of funeral.
Right.
Which had it in a similar business-type district, I think the staff report spoke of that. So, I think they're finding out that these are, have become less intrusive as technology, you know, advances, that these could be less objectionable some, sometime back in the past.